Rinwater. One more time. Thanks, Terry. Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the watershed committee meeting, special meeting of the board of directors meeting for Rinwater. Today is Thursday, June 20th. Terry, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Good morning. Director Ron Jeev Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt and Chair Matt Sampson.
Here.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to adopt today's agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Terry, roll call.
Director Kush.
Aye.
Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any public comment today on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and move to our regular items. Number A, motion to approve the minutes from last watershed committee.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, roll call.
Director Kush.
Aye.
Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
And Chair Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to item number B. And that's going to be the wildfire pathway modeling presentation and Director Horn.
Yeah, good morning, directors. I'm Sean Horn, Director of Watershed Resources. The first item for you today is an informational item. We're going to provide you with a little presentation around some wildfire modeling approaches that are being used in the methodology to help us inform our thinking around how we're implementing our biodiversity fires and fuels integrated plan. And with that, we brought in a guest speaker, and so I'm going to just let our guest speaker introduce himself and his background and then provide a little bit of context around why we're looking at this and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good morning, directors. Thank you for having me today. Dave Wannaker presenting work we've been doing through a grant provided by the Gordon and Betty Moore Foundation through the Western Fire Chiefs Association, really attempting to move forward the discussion about how fire spreads across the landscape and how treatments can be used to manage that fire for beneficial outcomes.
So you'll recall a couple of months ago, as part of our review of the biodiversity fires and fuels integrated plan, we had a presentation from staff on some wildfire modeling that we did to evaluate the efficacy of our treatments, and that was done by Tuckman Geospatial and Carol Rice, who's done some previous work with the district on our 1995 veg management plan. And that was really to evaluate kind of the implementation of veg management work and forest restoration activities on the watershed and how it influences the spread in the various wildfire behavior aspects of the work itself. And then you'll recall at the last watershed committee meeting, we had a presentation from Danny Franco from the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy around the work that the One TAM partnership has been doing around forest health and the forest health strategy that was recently published. And that really provides us with the context of forests on the watershed, the health of those forests, some of the stressors we're seeing, and feeds into our thinking around how we can be proactive in restoring the health of the watershed. This presentation is going to be a little bit different in that it's looking at various wildfire modeling approaches and thinking about strategic placement of some of those treatments. So at the next watershed committee meeting, you'll get a review of what we've done under the Biffitt for the last year, and we're also going to review what we've completed over the last five years. And then show you what we're thinking about for the coming years with some of the grant funding that we've received in terms of the areas that we'll be working on in the watershed. And this presentation really is going to be something that we can then integrate into that and help us kind of guide our thinking around strategic placements of future work. So that's why we're bringing it to you today, and I think it'll be informative and just helpful in helping us kind of under that lens of adaptive management, continue to evolve our approach with Biffitt implementation. So with that, I'll hand it to Dave, who's got a presentation for us today.
Okay, so without further ado, walk through some slides. Happy to answer any questions either in stride or at the conclusion. So the takeaway here is that when we're looking at how fire is going to move across the landscape, the modeling is all the same. It all is generally derived from Rothermole's 1972 work, and these are semi empirical mathematical models that use a combination of topography, weather and fuel. The fuel model can be, there are different iterations. Tuckman and others have done work to advance those fuel models so they more accurately represent conditions on the ground, but the inputs are generally all the same. The difference is a question of outputs, and are we looking at the intensity with which fire is going to burn, which is a traditional way of viewing the fire's potential to damage specifically merchantable timber. This, a lot of these things come out of the Forest Service, out of the Missoula Fire Lab. The Missoula Fire Lab, being a Forest Service entity, is concerned about protecting trees that can be sold. I would argue in the Mediterranean counties of California, we are more concerned about a fast moving fire that will come off of the landscape into our surrounding communities at a rate that outpaces the firefighting response. This was outlined in 2008 through Jack Cohen's Wui disaster sequence. And very simplistically put, when you get to stage five and stage six of this sequence, you have more fire than firefighters at the point of transition. So a vegetation fire that is now transitioning into structures and has the potential to become a structure to structure conflagration. It is that, those are the conditions that we have been responding to since about 2017 in Northern California, where fast moving fires come off the landscape with such speed that they outpace the firefighting response. If that same fire is moving more slowly, we have time to evacuate residents and to respond and to aggregate an effective firefighting force that will be able to protect homes and critical infrastructure. And until such a time as we have managed the fire pathways through which fast moving fire spreads, we will continue to have significant political and cultural pressure to suppress all fires. Because there is a concern that that fire could get away and could run into the surrounding community. And over time, as we mitigate the pathways, the combination of topography, weather and fuel that brings fast moving fire into our communities, we will see a sense of adaptation and resilience established amongst our communities that surround open spaces that can support fire. So that we will be able to embrace the return of managed fire, not just prescribed fire and cultural fire, but managing unplanned ignitions for beneficial outcomes. And then we've seen over the last several days, numerous fire starts, almost all of which were immediately suppressed, some of which probably should have been managed for beneficial outcomes because it was the exclusion of fire on the landscape is a large part of how we got here. So the desired end state is that we have those mitigations in place on the landscape that will reliably slow fires so that we are confident that a fire that is burning will not outpace our firefighting response. And we will do that in a manner that matches our mitigation resources inclusive of maintenance with the landscape, with the treatments we have in the landscape. If we put in a fuel break, a splat, other treatment, we should be committed to maintaining that in the long term. Because if it has value now, it will have value in out years. And the landscape is littered across California with projects that were put in and abandoned. And I think it's very important that as we look at where we're going to put our mitigations, we match those to the resources available inclusive of maintaining them. Otherwise, we're not managing the landscape effectively over the long term. So this is done through identifying those locations where fire is going to enter values at risk. We work from the thing we are trying to protect outwards back onto the landscape. Once we've figured out where the entry points exist, then we look for those strategic opportunities, primarily through the placements of splats where they have the ability to interdict a node that will spread to surrounding edges. One of the factors we're looking at is a high degree of centrality or tendency to make hub. Is this a point that will begat additional fire that will then spread to other areas? Not all treatment acres are created equal. Some treatment acres are massively valuable with regard to their ability to disrupt downstream spread. And then having identified those locations, that's then converted into the location, the type, the return interval and the prescription for these treatments. So we understand not only how effective it is now, but how that treatment will decay over time in order to maintain it. When those things are in place, we then can integrate them into a firefighting response pre-plan about how we will build upon the pre-fire actions where firefighters are able to make a stand. One of the things that's worth reviewing is the definitions here. A fuel break by definition is an area of modified fuel from which firefighters will be able to take offensive and defensive actions, right? So we want to integrate our pre-fire actions into our pre-fire planning. And so what that looks like on the landscape is using the simplicity of the cartoon here, but we have a vegetation to vegetation fire burning in the landscape. And as that fire advances, it's opportunistic. And when it identifies alignment between topography, weather and fuels, it will make a run. And that run will then fill in. And so we don't see fire, generally speaking, advancing just in a massive flaming front. We see fingers of fire that then fill in. And when those fingers of fire encounter a non-burnable feature, as you see in the top with the agricultural land depicted there, the fire stops. Fire cannot burn across a landscape where it doesn't have receptive fuel beds. But when those fire pathways encounter homes that are not prepared to receive fire, those homes can burn and help spread the fire. And when they encounter dense homes that are not prepared, we then set up urban conflagration. And dense in this case means structure separation distances of 50 feet eve to eve or less. And what that looks like when it, when it occurs on the landscape is this. So here we see an example in Lake County. We start with understanding the values at risk, toggling on and off there, that being the population centers. So we work from in to out. We look at the weather conditions that existed in September of 2020, 17 mile an hour winds out of the west. And then we look for the minimum time travel pathways so that the combination of topography, weather and speed or and fuel that will support fast moving fire, that the most efficient route fire can follow into the community. And we see as an example in the north here, where in 2018, there was a fire that disrupted the fuel beds and has not fully with regrown. Those areas in the north of the county have very little wildfire risk. But there are other areas that have not experienced recent wildfire and have had things grow and not be mitigated where fire is able to rapidly make its way into those values at risk and into the community. Specifically in and around Kelseyville, which is highlighted there in the center. While it's primarily surrounded by agricultural lands, there is a ridge system of unmitigated brush that will bring fire into that community, even though on first blush, they wouldn't appear to have much risk. And we also, in this particular case, we want to take a look at a Diablo wind event. So we have both a west wind and a northeast wind, those fall dry winds we typically see, where fire will move off the landscape into the community from the opposite direction. So having a holistic understanding of what fire can do, certainly in this county, fire has burned in both directions on a northeast Diablo wind event and then a west wind reversal following a Diablo wind event where that mass of dry air is coming back in from the ocean. And then we take a look at environmental exclusion areas, these being the areas of either habitat corridors or riparian areas where it is not a good idea to do work because there are protected species in that area. And then having looked at the treatment suitability, we then make recommendations for where those treatments can be placed, where they have accessible, i.e. not on a steep slope near a roadway. They are not in a environmentally sensitive area and they have a significant contribution to the slowing of fire spread. You'll note down at the bottom, there are several treatments inside an exclusion area that would call for pulling those treatments upstream out of the area that's restricted in order to achieve the benefits without causing environmental impact. So having done that, we, having identified those pathways, we then essentially we run a durability model. So that what was done here was thousands of stochastic simulations dropped in the landscape and looking for deviation based on either ignition point or variability of the wind. And what we find is that as long as the wind is within the same quadrant, so 45 degrees either side of center line, the pathway follows the same path. These things are very durable and primarily that's due to the topography and the fuel being unchanged. And as long as the wind is in the same general quadrant, the fire is going to follow the same pathway. So these are, these are predictable, they are knowable, and they're also very durable, as in we have a finite number of weather conditions that we will see during fire season in the Mediterranean counties of California, and they can be predicted and modeled. So then we approach this as a system. So if we put a single treatment in place, depending on the fuel model and the conditions, fire is very likely to just flank and to burn around it. And so it is a system approach that recognizes the network effect of fire and applies a similar network effect of treatments. So if we place a variety of treatments on the landscape and we create a labyrinth through a varied age class mosaic that mimics the natural state, fire now has to pick its way through the unmitigated areas, which significantly slows the fire and buys more time. And we also recognize existing natural obstacles, so non-burnable features, golf courses, orchards, reservoirs, roads, things that won't burn and account for how those are going to manage and shape fires pathway. And then opportunistically place those treatments in a way that builds upon the existing non-burnable features. As I said, for each of these treatment areas, we take a look at whether or not it is along a pathway that will protect a number of homes. Will that treatment reduce the fire spread? What is the fire behavior going to be at this location before and after? What is the tendency to make hub and degree of centrality is in how much fire comes out of this particular node through a variety of edges? What is the potential for ember cast from fire before and after this location? So that if we create a single linear feature, it is very likely that embers will fly over it and ignite new fires downstream. So we need to account for the ember cast to build depth to our defensive systems. And then lastly, how difficult is it to get to the location? Identifying the critical treatment area halfway up a very steep slope near no road does us no good because it's effectively impossible to treat in that area, certainly not in a cost effective manner. So having identified the treatable areas, then you run an algorithm. This is a genetic algorithm that involves a series of iterations where we prioritize those treatments that have the greatest value. Those are put together into a tranche based on the number of acres that are reasonable to treat in an area. Then the entire plan is cycled again to see the benefit of that first tranche of treatments and look at the landscape as it will be after the initial round of treatments are complete. And then second round of treatments are recommended. And then depending on the fuel type and the natural fire return interval, every three to five years in a brush model, you would come back and maintain those previous treatments, which, as I mentioned before, speaks to the importance of selecting your treatments with great care. Because if they are the appropriate treatments to protect the landscape and the community, you are essentially committing to maintaining them in perpetuity. So choose them wisely. And so what that establishes then is a network of treatments along the minimum travel timelines that create that varied age class mosaic, create that labyrinth fire has to creep their way through. Takes advantage of low cost, high impact things such as targeted grazing and grasslands, which is the most effective way, specifically cows, not goats. And then all of this is built around working from in to out to protect the community and the values at risk, critical infrastructure, et cetera, that we're trying to keep fire out of. Not all treatment acres are created equal. Just announcing we have carried out a certain number of acres isn't doing much to advance the, our treatment goals. California's natural fire acreage is 4 million acres a year. We're not going to get to 4 million acres a year, so we need to be more thoughtful about how we're going to do this. I would just close with, with offering that from what I have seen and have learned about the treatment plans you all are using on the landscape, a lot of these things are already being done. And we would commend the Water District and others who are being thoughtful about where treatments are being put on the landscape in a holistic and long-term manner, rather than just blindly cutting acres and reporting that we did stuff. Be happy to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to share some of our work.
Sean, thank you for bringing this forward. And Dave, thank you very much for the presentation. I'll go ahead and open it up to board member comments.
Sure. Well, the thing I really enjoyed and it was great presentation, and it's good to see the kind of thinking that's going on. Playing God is a little tricky, huh? Perpetuity caught my attention. Do you see a role for this to fit into land use planning?
With regard to development, sir?
Or non-development, yeah.
100%. If we understand where fire is going to spread and we understand where fire is going to enter the community, we absolutely should inform decisions about what will go where. We're specifically sharing some of this work with the Rancho Mission Viejo Development in Orange County, master plan, 17,000 home development. In response to an understanding of the entry point, they are shifting non-burnable community amenities such as dog parks, sports fields, et cetera, to the points of entry. So if and or when fire arrives at that point, rather than encountering homes that may or may not be maintained in a fire resistant state, it's going to encounter a dog park and a sports field, which will never burn. And therefore, all of that energy and all of those embers will be expended on non-burnable features. I also think it's helpful with regard to existing communities, understanding where to prioritize outreach, education incentives and enforcement around existing defensible space and home hardening laws to ensure those are in effect at the point of entry.
Do you see it reaching into the actual zoning? That, because you know, that, that's a cooperative developer saying, I'm going to do this anyway. I can do it where you say. That's great. But I, I'm asking a little further than that, like, would you see a ban on building in certain locations? I mean, you know, I don't watch the CNN, but it's similar, their pitching on this, the idea that you take a forest and you overgrow the forest. And then you have these different conditions, then on top of that, you build inside the forest. And it's like, you're almost guaranteeing destruction of the homes.
Yes, sir. I would, so zoning obviously regulated by the state through the fire hazard severity zones. I would argue strenuously, however, existing state law and state regulations through specifically through chapter 7A of the Building Code requiring ember resistant conditions. And the pending zone zero regulation, the Board of Forestry will be releasing at some point in the near future. Those things combined with thoughtful perimeter control measures are generally very, very effective. And we do not see new homes and new communities experiencing the same level of fire loss of pre-2008 construction. So this speaks, I think, not to the need to eliminate housing in those areas, but it's more to engineer it to meet the expected conditions. Understanding that some of those conditions may involve fast moving fire that will outpace the firefighting response. So the pre-fire passive measures on and around those homes need to be sufficient to address the expected BTUs.
Well put.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ron Jeev.
Thanks a lot, Dave. Fascinating analysis and really encouraging application of data for getting better with our fire management. It sounds like some of the models that are used to predict fire flows have been around for quite a long time. So can you just say a little bit about the validation of these models, how well they actually do predict events when those events occur? And then also any validation of treatment methods? Have we been, is there enough experience with those to be able to say, yeah, these are very good at, you know, ensuring effective treatment methods?
Yes, sir. So with regard to the background, Rothermole's seminal 1972 work, which created the basis for semi empirical mathematical models. Built upon by Van Wagner's 1977 work having to do with crown fire propagation. All of that was digitized by Finney in 1997 when he created Farsight, which was the first digital implementation of this. Dr. Finney's Farsight, which then begat Flammap and Elmfire and all the other things that are currently being used, included MTTs, minimum travel time pathways as, as part of the outputs. Also includes a treatment optimization module, which is the basis of the treatment locations. Now there's some tinkering having to do, really to match, the toms or the treatment optimization module is grabbing the most effective location irregardless of limitations on the, on how realistic it is to do those treatments. So, so we've added some other elements to reflect real world considerations, particularly in the Wui, which is distinct from the open forested spaces that the Forest Service is focused on. So my, my point of saying that background is, is this is not new. This isn't a black box that's been dreamed up. This is an existing, the use of existing models that are the basis of everything we're doing in the wildfire hazard and risk analysis space. It's just using a different output and that output being based on speed vice intensity. I don't particularly think with regard to Wui community threat, that intensity is all that relevant because a hot burning, slow moving fire while potentially damaging to the landscape, although potentially beneficial to the landscape as well, depending on, on the fuel type. But those fires don't burn communities because we are able to aggregate the firefighting response in advance of the fire's arrival. And it's worth noting that the CAL FIRE lists for the largest fires are different from the CAL FIRE list for the most destructive fires with regard to homes. Because the, the large 100,000 million acre fires are not generally burning very many homes because it's a slow moving fuel dominated fire. The Oakland Hills Fire is an example, very small fire, lasted 12 hours, burned an awful lot of homes. The first operational period of the Thomas and the Tubbs and the Atlas in the North Bay is an example. Fast moving fires didn't burn particularly hot, burned very fast. With regard to validation of the treatment types, the, the models are very firm about how they, they output, as is the actual experience. When fire encounters either a non-burnable feature or a feature of reduced combustibility, it slows and is more receptive to either management or, or control. This has always been the case, and a lot of what we do on extended campaign fire is putting these things in place in, on a just in time basis, which obviously is, is inefficient and is reliant on, on having the resources available. So I would say fire is dynamic. Fire reserves are right to do something else as it does from time to time. But these models are, are using all of the same outputs that we are using for everything else in the fire modeling space, and they continue to be refined and to get better as the computational resources available, particularly the fluid dynamics research around weather. Weather is very dynamic and weather is one of the primary limits as far as the inputs. And the weather grid, which is typically done at a 12 kilometer basis, microclimates happen at something smaller than that. So there is some variability there. Generally speaking, however, these things are, are proven, they're accurate and they're, they're the best we have. Understanding that the fire is, there are challenges to modeling fire with any degree, with a, with a degree of accuracy beyond say that the 90th, 95th percentile.
I think, yeah, that all makes sense. It's great to hear, obviously, that there's confirmation, but also understandable that we have to be continually adjust, continue to adjust as conditions change, as climate changes. So, yeah, great to hear.
Great. Monty.
Thank you so much. I feel like I've just taken a very high speed masterclass slash TED Talk on, on, on this really important work. I mean, it, you know, it can't be understated, obviously, how important it is that we're learning from, from fire. We've had a lot of catastrophic fires that are the worst ever in, in history and things like that, that really are just a signifier that we, we are, if we don't do things, obviously, to do our landscape, manage our landscape differently, we will have another fire that is even bigger. We'd like it to be that wildfires, the ones that especially involve our urban landscape are notably never be eclipsed because of, of work that, that we've done on the landscape. And the modeling that you're talking about is, is hugely important and, and there's already been some good questions, so I won't go into some of the ones that I was going to ask. But one of the things I think that we're really seeing in our communities throughout California, and we are no different here, is the impact on insurance. And obviously, this modeling could really inform how we manage our landscape better to reduce risk, maybe reduce costs of fire insurance. Can you speak at all? I think that's a, that's something that will get the attention of a lot of our community members who do live in the Wui. We have a lot of that. Obviously, people are going to be very interested in what they can do to reduce their fire risk and also be able to increase their chances of insurance. So I don't know if there's any thoughts you have about that.
It's a great question, sir, and very timely. We've done a fair amount of work with the CAT model, the catastrophe risk modelers that are, whose work is used to inform the underwriting decisions expressed in average annual loss expressed in dollars per million insured. In Paradise, they completed, it's called Task 1 through 4 Report with Milliman and CoreLogic last year. And, and what that report found was if there were 45,000 acres of buffers created around Paradise, which is, is not realistic, but it was a modeling exercise. If everything in those areas were reduced, irregardless of environmental considerations or financial constraints and so forth, that, that would reduce risk. I think can all intuitively understand that. From an average annual loss standpoint, however, creation of those buffers only reduced the average annual loss by 20%. And that there was an additional 60% of risk reduction that could be achieved through defensible space and home hardening at those points of entry where fire is going to become established in the community. So I would say with regard to, to the watershed and understanding there are many competing imperatives for what you do with the land, the stewardship, production of water, wildfire risk, all of these things. Just cutting it all down and covering it in gravel, obviously not an option. And even if you did that, there would still be wildfire risk because of ember cast and so forth. So what the insurance work is finding is that yes, it is important to do treatments on the landscape. And if those treatments are carried out and in a verifiable way, they show up in land fire and you can see them in fuel models, they will show a reduction in wildfire risk. CAT models run on a fuel model. If that fuel model shows reduced combustibility, that will be reflected. But the high end of the contribution of that work to the average annual loss calculation is 20%. With the splats, the, the treatment optimization, we're finding at about 7% of the work, you get about 75% of the benefit, right? So that the treatment optimization carries over to your question about modeling to the insurance models. But, but all of the headspace with regard to average annual loss reduction, not all, but the, the preponderance rests at those points of transition into the surrounding communities or defensible space and home hardening. To inclusive of a legitimate zone zero, nothing combustible within five feet of the structure, which is obviously outside the water boards purview, but for fire districts and municipalities, that is a very sensitive topic. Certainly there's a history of that in Mill Valley. So the, the point here is it, it all has to come together and there is no silver bullet. We can't just buy bigger helicopters. We tried. We can't just create lots of fuel breaks in the landscape. We've done that too. Yet we're still losing homes and we're still seeing an insurance crisis unfolding as the market rapidly moves towards collapse. So there is a, there is a conjunction here between the receptivity of the surrounding communities. And our goal ultimately is to create communities in and around our open spaces that are capable of being in or adjacent to a fire perimeter without experiencing loss. And when we get to that point, the disruption of pathways, creation of defensible space and home hardening retrofits, I believe that is what it's going to take to unlock a future state where we will be able to make beneficial use of unplanned fire at the scale it takes to restore landscape. Right? So that where the community will be cheering when they see a smoke call, because that means we are about to get thousands of acres of free fuel mitigation and we will accelerate our long And we will accelerate our long-term plan because we're getting some acres that are outside the permitting structure, essentially come with no cost because the firefighting response is a fixed cost, et cetera. That, I believe, is the long-term goal. And that links very nicely to insurance because that speaks to sustainability over time as budgets contract, which we're certainly seeing happening in real time at the state level.
Yeah, wow. Well, thank you. I'm still, yeah, as this keeps going, I keep wanting to ask questions. And, but I just simply say, I really nicely put in terms of connecting managed fire to benefits to insurance. I think honestly, that is, it's, obviously, it's, I think it's correctly termed, it's a crisis because there are so many folks who are losing insurance and can't afford to secure new insurance. And that's not a sustainable future. So figuring out how we, as a district with so many lands that are part of the fire risk can feed into, obviously, what is a, has to be a networked collaborative effort. I know we're committed to doing that. So thank you for your time.
Great. Dave, thanks again. And I just want to highlight again what you said about a partnership because I think in this community or this region, this county more specifically, we've got the built environment surrounded by a variety of landowning agencies that everyone's got to do their part. And hopefully, something like this can be adapted regionally so that it actually makes sense and everyone's working under the same kind of play. I did have a few questions on the maintenance piece. So you talked about maintaining things. And that's been one of the biggest hangups for something like a massive fuel break project. Any recommendations or best practices in terms of recurrent cycle for maintenance when we do some of these treatments specifically on lands like we own here in the Water District?
So it depends on the fuel model. In grass, obviously, there is no residual value. Work that's done on the grass, grass in the spring of 2024 will provide no wildfire risk reduction in the summer of '25. In brush, it's more the three to five, depending on the moisture and the specific species, three-to-five-year return interval before brush that has either been thinned or cut has regrown and the decadent component has reestablished itself. But new brush during greenup simply will not burn. The live fuel moisture levels are too high and there is little or no dead fuel and very little woody material available. In timber, specifically in the understory, more in the 10- to 15-year interval, it varies whether it was hand thinning or whether it was broadcast fire. Using broadcast fire, obviously, has greater out-year benefit because it eliminates more of the fuel. But it takes time for that duff layer and depositive material to accrue to quantities that will support fast-moving fire. So the answer is it depends, depends on the fuel type. It also depends to a degree on the aspect. On a south-facing slope versus a north-facing slope, you're going to have very different growth patterns.
Great. And the reason I dive in is that, you know, from a concern about sustainability into the future, you know, we're a district, like most landowning agencies, that are very dependent on grant funding. And when that starts to dry up, the ability to maintain massive projects also dries up with it. So something like this, especially with the limited amount of acreage we can treat a year, seems to make sense because we can go back and touch it almost with the same amount of dollars or less for that. So that's, that's very encouraging to hear. One of the other ones you touched on with the competing interest on the watershed, specifically around environmental factors, plants, animals, et cetera. When we look, when you look at pathway modeling and being able to take in consideration those limitations or competing interests, do you find that these models are still effective in getting to desired result?
Absolutely. There's a great question. So as I briefly touched on in the Lake County example, when there is, the treatments are initially recommended, assuming there are no constraints. Where would it be most optimal? And then we then down-select for those of the most accessible. So lower slope access to a road. The next step in that down-selection is looking for those that are not in a riparian area, not in habitat, not in a habitat corridor. And there are plenty of opportunities to pull treatments upstream or downstream and look for treatments that are marginally less optimal with regard to disruption of the network, yet far more optimal with regard to constraints. And so you can then, having a methodology for selecting and valuing treatments without sort of mindlessly seeking an opportunity to make them contiguous for not any particularly good reason, it gives a lot more flexibility to pull those treatments out of areas where they could have environmental impact. And then to be thoughtful as well about how we can manage a fire pathway so it will then spread through areas that would benefit from a fire return interval, knowing that they are buffered by downstream treatments so that we could see isolated runs of fast-moving fire in areas where it's beneficial, knowing that it will slam into essentially a landmine field of slower work. I would say with regard to fuel breaks, you mentioned, I understand there might be at least a few cyclists sitting behind me. In bicycle frame construction, there's a concept of lazy carbon, which is carbon that is not contributing to the rigidity or the strength of the frame, yet is adding weight. I would argue on fuel treatments, particularly on fuel breaks that are contiguous, there's going to be a lot of lazy acres that don't do a whole lot, yet come with a cost and environmental impact. And by avoiding those, we can target our treatments by shifting them along the long axis of the approach instead of perpendicular. We have a lot more opportunities to place those treatments in places where they have efficacy and they have minimal impact on the landscape.
Great, thank you. One more follow-up on something you touched on about districts that are being, you know, have quite a bit of pressure to do fuel mitigation work right now, especially with the history of fire in California recently. And a lot of those efforts result in, we did stuff, you know, like you said. And I think at some point, that's going to no longer be an acceptable answer. So if we, if we did look at these areas and we looked at the splats along these pathways and we do the work, is there a way to quickly reevaluate that to show effectiveness of our efforts?
Absolutely. There's two ways to do it. One is saying, if you did these things, what would the future state look like? Where you show the reduction in combustibility in those selected pixels and then you run fire across the landscape, all other factors being equal. And you can compare the change in arrival time. How much longer did it take fire to get to the values at risk to show benefit? You can also show benefit by the number of homes or values at risk that are in or adjacent to a fire entry point or an ember threat zone, where the fire terminates into the built environment, how long that takes. Then that gets offset by the firefighting response. How many firefighters will be available and what timeframe? With what capacity? And do we model fire outpacing that? That's one way to do it. The other way that would be far preferable is you have done work and that work is now modeled to show this isn't a future state, this is the current state. And we can compare what the fire conditions are with regard to spread rates, arrival times, number of homes in or adjacent to an entry point or an ember threat zone relative to what it was before you began the work. And in doing that, you can track risk reduction over time versus reporting the measures of performance we carried out acres. Instead, you can look at the measures of effectiveness, what were the outcomes?
Great.
Can I jump in on that, Matt? You've raised interesting issues. Dave, you know, one of the fire mitigation efforts that we're particularly encouraged by here in Marin and really keen to see bear fruit is the contiguous, I think it's almost 35-mile fuel break that's being established through the Marin Wildfire Protection Authority. Do you think that there's opportunity to improve the efficiency of that effort rather than just say, you know, we're going to create a single 35-mile fuel break? And are there opportunities to evaluate the effectiveness of that approach so that future efforts are even maybe more beneficial?
So I think that there's a distinction between a fuel break across the landscape and extended defensible space, which is what the Greater Ross Valley and the Greater Nevada Fuel Breaks are intended to do, which is building depth at the points of entry all along the back of the homes that front the watershed. So I think those are, they're two very different discussions. And that, those fuel break efforts are intended to extend the buffer at the points at where the values at risk are, distinct from establishing new fuel breaks or extending ridge-top fuel breaks, which is of marginal utility in a setting such as this one because the landscape scale is so small. And fuel top or ridge-top fuel breaks come with a lot of caveats. They're really fire breaks as well. So I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison with the work Marin Wildfire is doing to create those extended defensible space zones behind the homes.
I have a quick one, please. Sean, do we do anything like this? Because your description, Dave, sounds exactly like the report we get is how many acres we have taken the brush away from out of the total as opposed to where we put them.
So I think we have to also recall the multi-benefit approaches that we're using for a lot of the work that we're doing. So when we do the report out on acres, you know, we're talking a lot about the invasive plant management to protect biodiversity on the watershed. Some of the forest restoration work that we're doing is to address sudden oak death impacts and the widespread degradation that that has on our native plant communities and also from a water, you know, to support or watershed, you know, responsiveness and resiliency perspective. So I think inherent in a lot of the work that we're doing is, you know, supported by the methodology that's being presented today. And I think it's just an opportunity for us to think about how we continue to refine the implementation of the BIPF as we move forward with more data to inform work.
Thanks.
Any final questions? Okay, great. I'd like to go ahead and open up for public comment.
Yes, we have about five. The first three, Linda Novy, Nona Dennis, and Larry Minikis.
That was a great presentation. Thank you. How does a community go about having this fire modeling done for themselves and then engage with the fire department to look at enforcement of these points of entry in homes in the area that may not have adhered to defensible space guidelines?
Certainly. So minimum time travel outputs are available in all of the standard fire models.
Oh, okay.
So it's widely accessible.
And you mentioned enforcement. How does, is that accessible through local fire departments or Ross Valley Fire? How do we work in enforcement?
So in LRA, Local Responsibility Areas, under Government Code 51182, that establishes defensible space requirements. And under 51175, a local agency has the explicit authority from the state legislator to establish more restrictive measures to match local conditions supported by a substantial finding effect. So that's a long way of saying that the limiting factor on enforcement is political will and whether or not a community is willing to eat their vegetables, if you will. This is hard but necessary work that gives our community's agency to reduce their wildfire risk exposure and by extension, their exposure to non-renewals in the insurance space. And there is no silver bullet. There is no, someone else will do something. But the limiting factor typically is a community. Well, everyone supports the idea of wildfire risk reduction as long as someone else is actually doing the work. So I would imagine in these areas, everyone would be in violent agreement that the watershed should do more. But as I said before, that only addresses up to 20% of the risk, assuming you did massive number of acres. But the defensible space and home hardening on small private parcels executed by homeowners is the missing piece. And that is not unique to Marin. That is statewide.
Thank you kindly. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Ms. Dennis, please.
Yep, my mom is the room for the next item.
Yeah, okay.
I just changed it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Larry Minikis and then Terry Thomas.
Yeah, Dave, I want to thank you for being here today. I'm a member of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Citizens Oversight Committee. So I've been quite exposed to your way of approaching this splat and all this and think it's very valuable and would encourage the board to very much support this approach to wildfire mitigation and management. And I'd like to say, while we're all here today for the next item, Recreation, as the headliner, this is really, to me, the star of the show. This is what's really important because if, when and if we have a devastating fire on the watershed, it's going to cut out recreation. So those places are not going to be available to us. And this work is just so critical, especially with climate change and these unbelievable fires that we've been seeing throughout the West here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning and thank you for the ability to comment today. My name is Terry Thomas and I come to you from a 34-year career as a National Park Ecologist and Chief of Natural Resource Management and Science. I have a bachelor's and a master's in forestry and a master's that focuses on prescribed fire as, in a way to restore National Park Service ecosystems. I worked for years as a wildland firefighter and scientist and wrote the first fire management plan for Golden Gate National Recreation Area. It has been a breath of fresh air. To meet Chief Winiker and Matt's introduction for that, their approach to open spaces and their knowledge is exactly what we need in Marin County. They have the respect of the fire community and they bring much-needed scientific approach to the prevention of wildfire and to fuels management. It has been frustrating that the Marin County agencies are putting so much effort into a large fuel break approach, like 300-feet fuel break in an area that's much more wind-driven fire fuels. Clearly, topography, weather, and fuels all participate in where the fire will be. But I'm hoping that if we can approach it more from a splat situation, that there will be a reduction in the space of the fuel breaks that are now in, are going around those homes. Over 4,000 acres a year of vegetation habitat for the last two years has been done in Marin County in these fuel breaks. And now that we have the knowledge that biodiversity is decreasing in Marin with a lot of recent reports, including one by Marin Water and Point Blue, it's important to keep the modeling to ensure that the removal of vegetation that's identified by modeling will help us to save these habitats. Coastal wildfires are wind-driven, not fuel-driven, even though all those aspects of topography, fuels, and weather take into account. But a spark that lands on your house, no matter how much ground is cleared, it can still cause a fire on your house. So using these models of fire behavior with ignition, relative humidity, vegetation and fuel characteristics, weather patterns, topography, and including where environmental sensitivities are, it's just so smart. We can catch a fire before we can't. Clearing fuels with prescribed fire is also the smart way to go. It's ecological, effective in wildfire prevention, and can cover many acres in a cost-efficient manner. It'll take millions of dollars a year for Marin County to maintain the fuel breaks it's creating. And they may not be cutting down fuel in the right, in exactly the right places. So I want to have one second left. So I just want to offer that I completely support Chief Winiker's approach and appreciate Matt Sampson for bringing it to Marin County's attention. Thank you.
Next, Jonathan Irwin.
Hey, thanks for the opportunity to chat. I'm Jonathan Irwin. I'm a San and Selma resident. I'm a Marin Water District ratepayer, hiker, outdoors person, trail steward, and mountain biker. I want to thank MMWD for enabling the conversation on fire management planning and bringing this level of insight and education to our community. I'll be out brushing my property later today. Thanks for the catalyst. I also want to thank WWMD for recognizing the need for an updated recreation plan and proposing a pilot program to demonstrate positive outcomes for our community and watershed. The watershed's an amazing resource we all want and, as demonstrated today, need to protect to ensure a safe and sustainable source for generations to come. And we're thankful for an equitable and inclusive opportunity to recreate within it. I further hope that we can recognize the need for shared recreation and limit the threat of legal action and oppressive environmental impact reports as they relate to recreation so that the staff can focus on what really matters, enabling and protecting a safe and sustainable resource for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have RTA.
Terry, just before we move on to the next one, I just want to make sure that public comments should be for this item as opposed to the following ones on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. RTA, please.
Yeah, hi. This is actually Tom Boss. I just wanted to share some insight I had about defensible spaces. I know a number of firefighters that have worked on the, a number of the wildfires here in Northern California. And one thing that I learned is that when they come in to a neighborhood or to a structure, they do a quick evaluation of how defensible that property or area is. And if it's not defensible, they move on for their own safety. So to me, that's my incentive to always make sure that I have a home that has a defensible space around it. And I go and talk to all my neighbors about the same and share that insight. So that's one way you might get some cooperation on managing properties so that firefighters will come in and defend them if there is a fire.
Thank you. I have no further speakers.
Great. Well, Dave, again, thank you very much for the presentation. Very enlightening. And Sean, I hope we can continue to include these types of methodologies as we look to refine our plan and make it more effective with our limited amount of funds. So appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. For the folks that are in the hallway, we actually are in the room that don't have chairs. We actually have some chairs that were put out in the hallway with a TV that you can see the boardroom. So if you feel more comfortable sitting in a chair, please feel free to move out to the hallway. There are plenty of seats and the TVs there. And you also have the ability to make public comment just like if you were here in the room. So Terry, move on to the next item. Item number C, Watershed Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study Update. Director Horn, your backup.
So directors, I'm joined with our Don Wick, our Chief Ranger, as well as Carl Sanders, our Natural Resource Manager for this item. We've got a presentation for you to provide an update on the Watershed Recreation Management Planning Feasibility Study. And I'm going to pull that up. And specifically, we're going to focus the majority of the presentation on the discussion around the pilot program frameworks and trial program for e-bikes. One second. So the agenda for this item is to provide you with an update and just to check in around the recreation feasibility study district completed. Talk through some of the strategic opportunities that have been advanced since the adoption of that document and then focus on the framework for the pilot program and trial period for e-bike class one. So the planning process, as you all know, was, came on the heels of the e-bike community advisory committee that was carried out for about a year and a half, provided a number of public meetings in format for discussion around e-bike access on the watershed. One of the things that came out of that was a recommendation to look holistically at all visitors on the watershed and the roads and trails that we have as a whole. To do that, we designed a planning process to support a conversation with the community around visitor access on the watershed and held six public meetings that was supported by additional stakeholder meetings to discuss recreation and areas of interest, areas that we could improve stewardship, visitor management, and evaluation of watershed facilities. Out of that planning process, we came forward with a set of strategic opportunities. Two of those strategic opportunities related to a pilot program for multi-use access on a subset of watershed trails and then also advancing a trial period for e-bike class one access as well. So I want to review some of the work that's been done over the last couple of months to advance the other various strategic opportunities because this was a very robust document in terms of thinking holistically about the watershed. It wasn't just about bikes. It was also about some of the stewardship activities that we could advance as part of our thinking and ongoing stewardship of the watershed. One of those key pieces was looking at how we could bring back a more frequent trail volunteer opportunities. So our volunteer program has put a lot of effort into this over the last couple of months. And it's been supported by a really interesting training that we developed in partnership with Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewardship to provide an opportunity to train up our seasonal staff to be able to support the volunteer opportunities that we're offering. And then we've held monthly trail events since that time. So we've made some good strides in this and we'll continue to do that over the coming months. In terms of our collaboration with One TAM and really focusing on providing opportunities for some of those underserved communities, we had a good event with the Canal Alliance at Lake Lagunitis and really emphasizing this is where the capacity is lifted amongst the districts through that collaboration with One TAM where we get this incredible expertise around community engagement and can reach deeper and broader out into the community to provide opportunities for folks to come to the watershed and experience it. Our volunteer program has also been supporting wildfire, wildlife docent and ambassador offerings for a variety of resources that we're focused on on the watershed and providing outreach opportunities as well. I'll just also flag that there's a webinar tonight that's on the One TAM Peak Health Report that was just published. And so that's a really robust document that's been developed over the last couple of years with the data that the district collects around biological resources and input from other public agencies that are also collecting similar data and summarizing that in a technical report to help us understand the health of the mountain. And that's going to be presented this evening.
Presented where?
That's a webinar. So online, if you don't have access, you can go to the One TAM website and just search Peak Health and there's a link to register for that webinar. Additionally, as we discussed, our ranger trainee program that we developed, one of the things we identified was an opportunity to have those folks have more of a natural resource background in helping to outreach to the community. And so we identified a training to send those folks to, to help them develop those skills. And while they're out there on grade, actually interact with folks and help educate them around the resources that we have on the watershed. The update to the roads and trails, priority non-system trails is something we identified as occurring as part of our reimagining of our roads and trails plan. So it'll be advanced in the next couple of months. We have not made any progress on our watershed signage and watershed map elements. Those were things that we were hoping to kick off in Q4. That's really redeveloping our six kiosks on the watershed and then enhancing our visitor map and making something more available in an online format as well. Our Rangers did host a natural resource and interpretive hike around West Peak in the historical setting of that in May. And we'll be looking at having quarterly events that relate to either biologists that the district have doing hikes or our Rangers doing some sort of guided hike. We've also developed a number of self-guided tours to help people understand some of the forestry work that's going on around Lake Lagunitis, as well as some of the prescribed fire that the district is trying to advance specifically up at Rock Springs. We have an annual.
I just have a quick question on that before I forget. The self-guided resource or hikes, are we able to determine how many people are taking those offers up?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure we can. I don't, we don't do that right now, but we can look into that.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. We also have an annual library pass. It's a really cool opportunity that folks can go to the library and check out a parking pass for the day and come to the watershed. So we've been expanding that. We've been doing that in partnership with Marin County Parks for many years and we're continuing to make sure that's available. Slow zones is something that we identified as being folded into the pilot programs as well as something that we continue to talk about and discuss as we think about updating the roads and trails plan or whatever it may become. So what we're going to focus on today, though, is the pilot study and multi-use bike access and the e-bike access trial period that we're evaluating. So the subsequent slides will focus on that. In terms of updated to watershed amenities, we made a couple of purchases in terms of water fountains to replace kind of just some old facilities that we have on the watershed, kind of celebrate water a bit more than we have in the past. Also, we've had more recent sightings of bears on the watershed and we've had them in our trash cans as well. And so we're trying to bear-proof all of our trash cans on the watershed, kind of an expensive little amenity, but an important one. And so we're trying to update our various facilities in that way. And then also purchasing of a bike station and thinking about where those would be more suitable on the watershed. And there's other amenities that we have planned, but these are just ones we've completed to date. And so the remaining strategic opportunities will really kind of roll back up into that, whatever we reimagining the roads and trails plan to be in the future. And that comes down to the watershed project zoning component as well and some of those accessibility improvements that we might want to see. So that's to be, to come kind of later in the Q4 and I'll kind of summarize that at the end of the presentation for next steps. So today, I think the focus is going to be on our pilot programs. And the district staff have been working to develop the framework and screening process to help us think through which trails would be suitable for a multi-use trail bike access. And that's what we're going to present today. This is all being done to help us collect information to inform that next step in this process. And we're also doing a trial program or recommending a trial program for e-bike class one. And so we'll provide you with kind of an overview of the framework that we're exploring in terms of that. And this is an informational item to get input from you all today as we continue to advance this. And we'll be bringing back something with a recommendation at a future meeting. So specifically around the trail sharing pilot program, the thing to be really clear about here is that we're examining existing trails and methodologies for sharing those trails. And that's really in the interest of not developing new facilities on the watershed, which reduces our collective environmental impact on the watershed from our use of it. So we are focused on our existing facilities. This does mean that we're asking people to compromise, learn to share that resource. And it's going to be a learning process for us. And we're being very clear upfront that that is what we're doing here as part of this effort. The district will be collecting data relating to visitor patterns, environmental conditions, and compliance with district regulations. As part of that, we'll be really active in our outreach and enforcement and looking at how people are using the trails and adjacent trails as well. So we're going to go into more of this as we go, but what are the questions we're asking from a management perspective? We've kind of put these in relationship to trail sharing and compliance. So we really want to explore through this pilot program. What methods can we use on select trails to evaluate how bikers, equestrian, hikers can share this resource? And so we're going to be studying that component of this through the pilot program to examine how visitor management strategies can be adopted on the watershed. And to be really explicit here, we're not evaluating this to inform updates to all of our trails. We're making a select, small number of trails that would be included in this pilot program to inform some access improvements in a limited way. We're also thinking about the natural resources and how we stewardship steward these. So we're looking at the environmental questions and we're thinking that implementing trail sharing methods on existing trails that avoid or have limited sensitive habitats and resources will not lead to significant changes in the trail condition or surrounding habitat. So as part of our selection process, we're really focusing on avoiding some of our sensitive habitats to the extent that we can. And that's will be shown in the screening framework that we'll go through next. And then we're also thinking through what stewardship opportunities can we build into this program to help support this? Because that's going to be key in terms of next steps. If we advance some multi-use trails, we're going to want to have stewardship actions that we can apply to those trails on a higher level of frequency. So the screening process, you know, we're utilizing this to inform which trails are selected. Not all screened trails will be selected. We've completely imagined that as we go through this process, we're going to find trails that intersect with resources that we just can't avoid or would have an impact that we're not comfortable with in a pilot program. And so that's really key to think through as we go on to the next couple of slides. From a biological perspective, we're thinking about our rare plants and our sensitive habitats to support those rare plants. And we'll be mapping those and thinking through those along the trail corridors that we're exploring. We'll do the same for wildlife habitat as well and sensitive areas that need to be avoided. And then we're going to be looking at how we compare those stewardship opportunities with our pilot program to protect those resources. Now, safety is critical and this is thinking through how people are using these trails. So we're thinking about the terrain difficulty and tread condition. We understand that folks want to have different experiences on different trails, but we also understand that there's going to be some features that just don't allow and support multi-use access. We're going to be thinking with our Rangers around the history of these trails in terms of accidents and enforcement ability and thinking about trail hazards that can't be mitigated, like a tree branch or a tree in the trail or steps or something that we just can't support multi-use access on. We're going to consider slow zones at those intersections and how those can be applied. And so that'll be something that we'll recommend with each of the pilot programs. We'll be thinking about abiotic conditions in terms of risk to soil erosion that might impact water quality. What's the tread trail width and design? What's the geological setting of that trail? We'll be thinking about current patterns of visitation, frequency of the trail usage, peak usage times, assessment of trail sharing opportunities. The current state and the trail visitation, you know, we're going to explore things that are going to be hard for people to, you know, share these resources. But we're thinking through this in terms of informing those shares, those trail sharing strategies, right? So we might select a one-way trail that might not make sense from a bike perspective. But if you think about it from another visitor perspective, it makes sense to think about that trail being one-way. And so it's holistic approach and it is being applied and thought through as we consider all of these trails. Enforcement and compliance, we're going to look for areas that we need to update our regulations to help inform people about the pilot program and what the strategies that we're testing out are. We're going to be thinking about visitor outreach in the form of increased patrols, specifically to interact with folks and make sure that they're compliant with the regulations that we're putting in place around these trail sharing efforts. Also monitoring adjacent trails to ensure that we're not opening a pilot trail that might be a feeder to a non-system trail that people are poaching. And we're going to be sensitive to not establishing, you know, more use on off-system trails. And then we're going to be thinking through what's the potential for stakeholder cooperation and engagement on these trails, right? Some trails might be more sensitive than others due to the historical nature of them. This is just an example of how some of this mapping starts to look. When we start to apply all of these considerations to a map, we start to see where there's going to be limitations and intersections with some trails. We're using sensitive resources here broadly because we're not going to specifically be calling out where we might have a rare plant or a rare species. And that's just the best management practice for natural resources is that you want to protect and be protective of that data and those resources so that they're not impacted. We have examples of, you know, identifying where a rare plant is and that rare plant being collected or being damaged for, you know, to impact it so it can be used in another way. So we're going to be very careful about how that data is presented here. And this is an example of how you can see where we have identified some trails that may be a good opportunity for the trail sharing pilot and how those will not interact, such as Sunnyside or Pumpkin Ridge, where there's limited resources of concern and they might provide opportunities. So we're going to do as part of the screening process, an updated map and a more detailed map similar to this. And we'll be adding a lot of information on to those as well to help you understand how we're going to manage each of these pilot trails as we go through the process. So one of the questions a lot of people have had are like, what trails are you exploring, right? And we were very clear through our whole planning process to, you know, wait until we got to this kind of incremental step, which we are at now, which is to explore this pilot program before we talked about trails. Because trails can be very emotional for folks in terms of their experience and, you know, their dedication to certain parts of the watershed. This is the list of trails that we came up through with conversation with various stakeholders around which trails would you be open to? Which trails are you interested in? Which trails are you not interested in? And not all of these exactly align with every group's interest, but they were kind of a consolidation of some consensus of where there were some opportunities. Now, these are the trails that we're going to screen. So these aren't the ones we're recommending. These are not open today as a pilot program. These are the ones that we're going to look at and develop a detailed matrix and report on to provide to you all to help us with our thinking of which trails make sense for this pilot program. So I want to be very clear about that. And we wanted to look at different parts of the watershed, right? We wanted to look at different areas that have different types of use and we wanted to think about different experiences. And the next slide I'm going to show kind of walks us, walks us through that. So as we heard through the planning process, there was a couple of trail sharing strategies that folks wanted to help us think through. We wanted to think about hiker and biker trails, hiker, biker, and equestrian trails. We are not exploring a biker-only trail at the moment, but that could be a discussion item for the future. Sharing strategies that we're thinking about are directional trail for bike access. And again, this goes back to thinking about all the users and how they're going to be interacting on these trails. Some trails might make sense for both directions. Other trails might be better for one direction. We're thinking about days of the week proportioning and that could look a lot of different ways. We're going to be exploring what that might mean. You could think of an odd even day, a way of sharing it. You could think of areas that have a lot of use on the weekend that maybe don't make sense for trail sharing strategies on the weekend. So we're going to test out those strategies as well. And then one opportunity that does exist in a limited way is thinking about road to trail conversion. So there's some roads, fire roads, that we, where we could actually limit our footprint by creating a trail out of that. And there is an opportunity for that in some parts of the watershed that we'll be exploring as well. The trail experience, as I mentioned, we're thinking about strategic connections. How can we get a cyclist off a road, for example, to make it more safe? How can we make a connection to a different part of the watershed that might not exist on a trail? How can we create a loop experience perhaps? And then also, what are the other visitor experiences? And can we find trails where there's another alternative? So if there's a multi-use pilot program on one trail, is there another trail that still provides that hiking opportunity that is not on a multi-use trail? So alternative options, right? That's one of the things that was brought into our consideration of this list of trails. And then the range of technical difficulty, right? We know that some kids want to be on the watershed with their parents and we know some people want a little bit more of a technical experience. So we're evaluating various opportunities there. This slide should probably go at the end, so I'll apologize on the formatting, where we put it. But the pilot program monitoring, this is specific to the trail, multi-use trail approach that we're taking. But we're going to be installing trail counters around these pilot program trails to understand the number of visitors and the type of visitation. We're going to be doing an increased invasive plant survey in the form of our early detection rapid response, mapping new trail, mapping new invasives and managing those invasives. One of the things that we don't want to see is kind of a big flush of new invasives coming in through that change of use. One of the things we're considering is how do we monitor the trail condition? So we'll be setting up transects to look at trail tread and width and potential erosion concerns on each of the pilot program trails. Establishing photo monitoring points is one of the kind of best ways we can just visually assess the change over time. And then thinking about compliance, having our Rangers do outreach and connecting with people and making sure that we're utilizing the strategies we're putting forward. We'll do two rounds of visitor surveys to collect kind of that, what is your experience on the watershed feedback? And that's going to be in a really controlled way so that we can have a very kind of thoughtful assessment of how we're changing people's experience through these multi-use trail sharing approaches. And then we're going to evaluate kind of our stewardship programs as well and think about how many people are attending our stewardship events. Are they addressing potential issues that are arising? And how can we continue to modify and improve upon that? So I'm going to shift now to the e-bike trial that we're recommending. And so this is something that did come out of our early e-bike CAC was the idea of a pilot program of some sort and how we framed it here as a trial period for e-bikes and specifically for class one. And we want to evaluate changes in the number of e-bikes using the watershed and how that might influence visitors on the watershed. And the management questions that we've kind of developed around that are that we, we expect that class one e-bike usage will be fairly stable in total numbers over the trial, trial period and won't increase in a significant way the overall bike usage on the watershed or negatively impact other visitors. From a visitor experience perspective, we have bikes on the watershed today. Visitors are interacting with bikes and we imagine that that will stay fairly positive in terms of. in terms of it's a change of a type of bike, but it's still a bike on the watershed. So we are thinking about the visitor experience and we, we want to explore through the surveys how folks are interacting with that, that new mode on the watershed as we look through this trial period. So I think the one piece to say is that the multi-use trail pilot program will be kind of managed separately than the e-bike trial period. But the e-bike trial period will support e-bike class one access everywhere that bikes are allowed on the watershed, which would include our trial multi-use trails. Now, there's definitely scope and limitations to a pilot program and a trail, a e-bike trial period. And we want to just kind of acknowledge that upfront and point out that, you know, there's a lot we're taking on here and trying to do this. We understand and appreciate that this is a new approach. I think out of this entire planning process, it has been about three and a half to four years. This is a small incremental step for us to help collect information that can guide our thinking around future visitor management opportunities as we move into kind of that reimagining of our roads and trails plan, which is our next step. But we won't be evaluating the differences of an e-bike versus a traditional bike on road or trail impacts. That's just not something that we're including in the scope of this pilot program. We're also not going to be conducting primary research to understand how one visitor influences wildlife over another visitor. There's plenty of research that shows people influence wildlife. It's really hard to decide which person influences wildlife in a different way. And we don't think we'll be successful in answering that question through this pilot program. And so we're not recommending it as part of it. The final piece that we wanted to say is, you know, all of these components are being tested to provide us with some tools for thinking about how we move forward. We're not recommending through this period pilot program or the trial period that this will change all of our roads and trails and the experiences people are having. So we're not going to come out of this and recommend that every trail that is currently open to hiking is suddenly open to biking. That's not the goal. The goal of this is to look at how can we make some thoughtful decisions around trail sharing strategies that can be advanced? And then how can we advance those in a way that improves access for our bike community in a, in a strategic way to provide a way for folks to move through the watershed on a bicycle and have a trail experience? But we are not going to do something that, you know, might potentially impact the other visitors that are using other subsequent trails. So we want to be just very clear about that. So the next steps in this entire process is we're going to complete our trail screening process. And so all of the elements that I outlined, we're going to review those for every one of those trails that we listed. And then we'll bring back a matrix and a report that kind of informs our thinking on which ones we're recommending to be included. And we'll bring back with that the SEQA compliance that supports it. We're going to continue to advance the other strategic opportunities. And then as part of the pilot program recommendations, we anticipate bringing that back to in August. That's a lot of work between now and August, but we're going to be moving in that direction. And then the next step in this entire process is thinking through, do we update that 2005 roads and trails plan? How do we reimagine that document to include visitor experiences? And, and what does that mean in our stewardship offerings and opportunities on the watershed? So we're going to develop a request for proposals to support that. And we're hopeful that in winter of 2024, we're kind of reviewing what that looks like with the, the watershed committee and then advancing that from there. So with that, Carl, Don and I are here to answer any questions that you might have and take any input.
Sean, thank you for the presentation and for all the, all the work that's gone into just getting us to where we are now too. So go ahead and open up to board comments. We'll start this way first.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Sean, for the detailed presentation. You know, I think like all of the board members and much for staff, I've had a lot of comments and inputs from various stakeholders regarding this process and what the outcomes might be. And it's really hard for me to identify an issue that's been raised that was not addressed in your presentation today. I'm not sure that all of them are going to be addressed in the way that every stakeholder would like to be seen, but you have captured those. That's not, that doesn't surprise me. So I don't want to, you know, go through point by point, all of the issues you've raised. I understand that these are items now that are going to be explored. There's a process behind all this. I will maybe just restate something that we all know really well, which is that I think, I feel the success of these pilots is going to be determined by our ability to evaluate them. And so that's informed by our ability to collect defensible data that builds confidence among all of our stakeholders. I hope we can use the feasibility study as a learning experience with respect to data collection and build upon that, identify the areas that could be improved, identify the data collection activities that worked really well. But, but, but I do think this is going to be the crux of the issue. So, you know, as do you, so I just look forward to hearing more about how we're going to be proceeding with data collection in, in addition to everything else you've outlined. You didn't, you didn't really, you did mention compliance. You mentioned strategies for monitoring illegal trail use. You didn't talk about penalties. We've raised this as an area that we would like to hear more about as a board. I know that's on a future agenda, so we don't have to dig into it now, but just wanted to put a pin on it as something that we are really interested in hearing more about and, and thinking through. So thanks, Sean.
Yeah, and I'll just mention for the community's benefit, that is on the finance committee next week on the 27th, I believe, we're going to be reviewing all the watershed fines and regulations and making some recommendations that also support these pilot programs in the trial periods in terms of the fine structure.
And Sean, appreciate you aligning that with this pilot program too. Important. Great. Monte.
Thank you again, Sean. You know, this, so much, so many years has gone into getting us here that I want to just appreciate the patience of you and the staff and as well as all the community members who, who've come, you know, on many occasion to come and provide comments and we'll hear from a lot of folks, I'm sure today. So just, it's, it's probably, I think in some ways, one of the most intractable issues that we've dealt with, but I think we're actually making traction now. And I, and I think that's again, due to the continued patience and collaborative spirit that, that folks have come to, even though it's, it's, there's a lot of strong emotions about these, these issues because we all care about the watershed and, and it comes from that place. And so I think this is really important, even though it's, we're a water agency and people are like, why are we talking about bikes? But here, you know, we all do know why we are doing that. And so just again, thanks to all the, the thought and work and patience that folks have put into this. I want to, on that theme, I want to highlight, I think how, this is very well thought out. I'm very supportive of, of the direction that we're going. The part that I, I am hopeful to hear about at some later point is more about what the, the various members and honestly, some of the stakeholder groups in the community will do in partnership with us on this. This is so, to me, the, the success of this is going to really, you know, will be greatly aided in how much the bike community and the horse community and the hiking community and the conservation community are all part of the discussion and in, and reaching out to their members and, and how we can help frankly, maybe develop some messaging and engagement strategies that, that, that support a positive engagement process. So how do, how will the bike community be reaching out to their members to talk about these rules? That if, you know, as a pilot, we want this to be successful. And part of that is showing that the bike community will respect that we've opened maybe some space, but that doesn't mean that everything is. And so if we start to see a, a strong illegal bike use, that's harmful to everybody. And so that kind of education outreach and so forth and understanding how, you know, how we will work together. So I, I just would like to maybe request that we, you know, at, at some later update, we could maybe get some thought and maybe that's something that can generate some conversations between now and then about what the bike community and the horse community and the hiking, conservation, fishing community, all the, the interest groups might be willing to, to commit to. Other than that, this is really fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean and team. A couple of questions. First, I think we're talking about just a couple of new trails that will have change of use. Is that right?
Yeah. So the list of trails that we provided are the ones that we're going to screen.
Right.
And those would be the, yeah, small number of.
Between one and three or what did we say in our previous understanding?
We didn't define a number of trails.
I thought of it between, I thought that that was what was mentioned. But, but it may have been open-ended, but it, but I, I think my point is that, to me, this seems like somewhat of an incremental move, not a massive shift to have the watershed and our land overrun by e-bikes and mountain bikes. And, and even more interesting to me is that given the fact that it is quite limited in scope, I would imagine that these few trails that will be changed will be the most scrutinized, the most followed, the most understood, the most researched and, and, and therefore I actually see an enormous opportunity for what Ranjiv and, and what Monte were saying around data collection and understanding of impact of recreation on our land, on our, on our wildlife. And, and, and so I guess that leads to my, to my next question. I mean, I, I think there's an opportunity here. I think we are going to come out of this incremental shift in use of a couple of trails with a much more thoughtful approach to how recreation impacts our land and, and, and our habitat. Can you talk a little bit more about what you mentioned as your SEQA compliance effort after you've gone through the trail screening process? What exactly does that mean?
So to support the pilot programs, we're going to do a number of compliance reviews as part of it to comply with SEQA and develop that. And so we have been talking through the appropriate approach and we'll be bringing that as part of the recommendation to the board.
And, and, and what's your thoughts about how to engage with the, our community as you develop that compliance review?
So the community has been involved in all of the public meetings to date. We do feel it's pretty important to make sure that there's transparent conversations that makes this space really important so that everyone can get the same information. We have been having individual stakeholder meetings as well. And we've used that to inform what we're presenting today and taking additional input as well here.
Great. I think that's really, really important. And if there's anyone in the community that wants to be a part of that, I mean, obviously reach out. And, and I think that's, that's, that, that level of transparency and cooperation, I think will help in a proactive way and make this work. I'm, I'm looking forward to the review of, of penalties and how we, how we deal with enforcement. And I guess maybe it's a ranger question, but I'm curious about your thoughts about our ability to, to enforce these, this massive amount of land that we manage. And do you feel like you need more resources? I don't know whether it's more rangers, more assistant rangers or, or, you know, you know, obviously you can't be there 24/7, but how can we be more supportive for your team? And that is obviously doing a great job, but we're, we have fewer folks on, on the watershed than we had in decades past.
That's a good question. And first, we need your support so that we can do our job. We're going to use what we have right now as far as our resources. The ranger trainees are going to be intercol in this. We'll get them out on foot more as ambassadors, education, along with the rangers being out there, patrolling more. Our education is going to be the first step. Remind people that this is a pilot program. Don't screw it up for everybody. Don't screw it up for a particular group. I, I think we can make it work. We always need more people. That's, that goes without saying, but so does everybody else, right? But I think that if we, if we identify areas that need proactive response, we'll be out there more and we'll monitor those areas. And hopefully we can, if there is some bad actors out there, and there's always a handful, it's not everybody, it's a handful. And we can crowd them in and, and make them realize this is for them. And they need to appreciate what we're doing for them and go along with the program.
I think, I think I want to be clear that I, I am, I don't solely see your role as, you know, working with bad actors. I mean, you guys are really, you know, you're right in the front and you're stewards and you're communicating with, with folks that are using it. And just, just so it's more public, I, I am supportive of increasing resources and investment in your group's effort and area. And I hope that the staff would look at how we can potentially use some of our funds to, to do even a better job in, in, in supporting our, our rangers and, and supporting therefore the watershed and recreators. So thank you for that. And just a shout out to your efforts with the volunteer effort and what Suzanne is doing. I'm thrilled about the partnership and the, and the thought process that Santa Cruz has helped bring to us. And, and, and there's been very clear support from both the mountain biking community or horseback riding community and, 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 and folks that are not recreators who speak for the trees and speak for the fish that, that they're willing to help and expanding that is fantastic. So good job and really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. I think the trail training and the volunteer opportunities are a great lift and hopefully help with that compliance piece. I'll just kind of remind that, you know, the last budget cycle, the district did add a ranger position. And then we also added the ranger trainee, which added two additional positions. And then we've been using a grizzly core fellow for the last year to support our volunteer and our ranger program. So we're actually kind of looking fully at kind of the services that the ranger department can provide and thinking more broadly around other activities they can bring, such as natural resource interpretation through the ranger training. But there has been a, a significant lift in our ranger department over the last couple of years.
Great.
Larry, I'm going to cut my comments short in interest of time, but the one thing you didn't mention was nighttime usage of the watershed. And I don't know if you're thinking about that with respect to this pilot, but I think that's part of something that really needs to be looked at. And how do we curtail this? Watershed's closed at night. It needs to be closed. It's closed for a reason. And I think we need to think about that seriously in this environment.
Okay. Sean, I'm going to start with a thank you to you and, and Don and Carl need some acknowledgement as well because although we see 21 slides, I know it's a lot more work that's gone into getting us the information on these slides. And I think it's a very thoughtful approach. I appreciate this, the screening strategies as well as, you know, some of the concerns that we need to look at. And the concerns right off the bat, you've highlighted, but I just want to reinforce. One is going to be the trail use off of a pilot, you know, it's the poaching where there's going on about having now access to these other trails is going to be critical for the success of this program. So just to make sure that the public knows as well that if these trails are being used for harm as opposed to really understand what the impacts of a pilot is going to be, it's going to give us an opportunity to yank back pretty quickly. And I don't want us to do that. I want us to set us up for success. So having that component in the evaluation process is important for me. And the other big one is going to be signage. You know, we're, we're bringing about a pretty big change, you know, and I think it was mentioned up here already. But if we're not very clear and concise that this is a limited scope and not a full access, then we're going to have an issue as well. And I don't want the folks saying, hey, we heard that now you have a pilot program, we can go anywhere we want. I think that needs to be nipped right off the bat too. And then the last one would be setting our, our staff up for success in terms of enforcement and education and outreach, you know, identifying trails that the rangers don't have to spend all day getting to and all day back because of everything else going on their, on their day. It'd be important to be able to have those folks be able to allocate a responsible amount of time for that. So big one for that. Under the trail screening and visit management strategies, I know that you guys are spending quite a bit of time looking at directional day of use, odd even type thing. And I would lead with, unless there's really a compelling reason to drive that right off the bat, I think there's a little bit of confusion in, in those pieces because we get some folks that will show up on a Tuesday and say Tuesday's not the day. And they look around, they say, no one's here, and then they get halfway down and there's an issue. So not, not, not moving forward with this, I don't think they're, they're bad to consider, but not until we identify that they're truly needed would be my recommendation for them.
And I'll, I'll just respond to that briefly in terms of setting this up as something that allows us to test different methods in order to inform updates to management policy. That's kind of a key piece of how we're going to put this program together. So there are things that we want to explore so that we learn, so that we can make thoughtful updates to the roads and trails in the future.
Yeah. And I see the benefit for that for sure, especially if we need to just identify stuff that doesn't work potentially too. But if we could limit that scope as much as possible, that would be helpful just to eliminate confusion. You know, this is a big change and it's really hard. It's us, it's easy for us who are in it every day and easy more so for you to identify what trails and be very clear. But for the public that doesn't engage as much, it's setting up for success. So with that, I just want to say thanks again for all the effort that's gone into this. It's very thoughtful. I really appreciate the way you're looking at a lot of different things on this as it is such a big change. So without any further board member comments, we'll go ahead and open up. So without any further, board member comments, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment.
Okay, we have.
Can I ask just real quickly, how many?
We have at least 10 right now ready to speak.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and reduce it down to two minutes and then move from there? Thank you.
All right. The first, the first three speakers are Terrell Callaway, Bob Mittelstadt, and Nate McKittrick.
Hi, board members. I'm Terrell Callaway, Executive Director for Marin County Bicycle Coalition and also the Vice Mayor for the great town of San Onofre. We have with our partners been advocating for access to single track on Mount Tam for over 30 years. Hundreds of people who bike from students on mountain bike teams to OG mountain bikers, some of whom are in the room right now who've been riding since mountain biking's inception. We've asked for increased access. Our numbers are not getting smaller. My organization alone has doubled in size since 2019 and access for bikes is moving along the same trajectory we are. We need more places. Thank you for hearing our voices. We appreciate the work and consideration this board has given into the process and the staff. It has been a long process and it has been very inclusive. We feel like our voices have been heard. We promise to be ambassadors for this project and engage in a public campaign to make sure that our riders are good stewards out there. There are things that we'll be studying in this project that we think could really eliminate or at least dramatically reduce any potential for conflict on the trails. We also want to put in a good word for Northside. That's kind of the holy grail for our community. We would love to see that opened. And we think that there's a low chance for conflict out there and we'd love to see that in the pilot. As this moves forward, Marin County Bicycle Coalition, along with our partners, will ramp up an education campaign to encourage riders to be model citizens out there. And we also will offer volunteers to help adapt and maintain trails as needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Bob Mittelstadt, e-bike access. Having been at this for over five years, many, many meetings in this room, I look forward and long for the day when we can all come here and be talking about issues of water quality, resiliency, sustainability. And when all of the well-intentioned people here get together and are on the same page and are all pulling in the same direction. My fear is that this trial program is going to cause more controversy and more antagonism. I think one way to avoid that, and Director Schmidt, to address your question, is a joint effort at monitoring. We've renewed our offer to be volunteer monitors. Us old guys and women up on the mountain can exert a lot of peer pressure on others. I think if we could combine with the Horse Council and MCL to do that, to extend the Slow and Say Hello program, to do that more often, to be up there, to have some kind of unofficial monitor vest or something, I think that can go a long way and we can all be on the same, pulling in the same direction. In our newsletter to our members, last month, we repeated the comments of the board members about enforcement. I did some research on this in 1911. The water companies that owned the land had armed guards keeping out hikers. And we don't want to go back to that. I think the way to avoid that is this monitoring. Two things real quickly. I think we need a baseline now on the number of e-bikes up there. The Alta data, which I've taken a deep look at, does not cut it. And so I think before the program starts, we need an accurate, you know, eco count of that. And finally, given that there are 60 miles of exclusive trails for hikers, I don't think it's out of the question that at some point we should think about bike-only trails, a few of them. Thank you.
Nate McKittrick, please, and then Nona Dennis and Lynda Novi.
Hi, I'm Nate McKittrick. I'm a longtime Sierra Club member and a member of both Marin County Bicycle Coalition and Marin Conservation League. I've spent many days doing broom poles and trail maintenance because nature and how we interact and protect it is important to me. And I understand the importance of stewardship. And in this board and staff and the rangers, we have good stewards. But stewardship isn't making a decision and setting it in amber. It means being dynamic to the changing needs of your constituents, to the science that you learn, to experience that you or other land managers have had. And other land managers have used all the methods that you saw staff consider, as well as I'll add constant ring, bike bells for some trails and bell boxes. So you're going places that other land managers have successfully gone before as good stewards of their land. Doesn't mean that there won't be things you'll change or modify or expand or contract. It is a dynamic process. But where are we now? Your constituents overwhelmingly said in the last election that they wanted better water resiliency, water supply resiliency and trail equity. And that's what you've heard from the younger generations who can't vote as well, who've come to your meetings and given comments. You know, I don't know why we have further delay in opening up key connector trails that are going to get us off roads, such as Northside and Arturo, right? Which connect two major fire roads, Rocky Ridge and Eldridge. Or how to get to Pine Mountain Road without riding up Bofax. I can't do that right now. My kids can't do that. Major fire road that connects to major fire road legal trails, but I can't get there without riding on miles and miles of road. You know, so again, it doesn't seem to be good faith to open up one to three trails and then threaten enforcement. Thank you.
Nona Dennis, please, Lynda Novi, and Al Bowman.
Great step forward. Sean, I want to commend you on the plan that's before you know, the feasibility study and the opportunities to screen some real live trails. We've been asking for that for some time. A couple of things I want to say in behalf of Marin Conservation League. The first is that we have been reaching out for more than 10 years to the bike community and to the horse community in the form of Slow and Say Hello. And I commend Bob Mittelstadt for wanting to take that forward and make something of it because we're a handful. But the monitoring of behaviors is critical. The second thing is that we're looking not just at the short term, and we don't know what that term is. Nobody has said how long the pilot is going to last. It's three years of pilot program. It's two years. During that time, the best you can do for CEQA compliance is to exempt. And there are existing exemptions, existing facilities, minor alterations to land, studies in order to bring forth data for future plans. That's the best you can do, really, for CEQA compliance for the pilot program. What we're looking forward to is the longer term, new baseline that updates the 2005 road and trail plan. This is not reimagining. It's revising that plan so it incorporates not just the experience from the pilot projects, but also the BFF and a more comprehensive view of trails that goes beyond the 2005 plan. And what we're really looking forward to is the comprehensive EIR that goes with that. For the pilot program, a 20-year-old program EIR does not offer a basis for tiering to do CEQA compliance for the pilot portions of this. And finally, we're looking forward to the long-term plan, which begins to address the real problem areas that are not going to be touched
Thank you.
during the pilot program. Thanks very much.
Lynda Novi, right? Hi, Lynda Novi, formerly of MCL and now President of Marin Horse Council and a dedicated environmentalist. I'll be sending you some comments on the proposed trails. I've been reaching out and have heard back from Marin Stables, from Barry Spitz. And Sean, I look forward to having some conversation with you about trail comments. Regarding road to trail conversions, I don't know that that's top on the list, but I point to the Ponte Ridge as an example of the complete displacement of all equestrians. And again, I'll put that in a letter to the board and to Sean and Don. I agree how many trails are in the pilot. I agree with Director Smith on that. A pilot is a small or mini study. There is new research on another note, on wildlife impacts from recreation that does distinguish different types of visitors and their impact. That just came out and I will forward that to you. And it came from a colleague, so I will forward that. What I haven't heard is what metrics determine success? So I'd like to hear that. And I guess my biggest point is earlier in discussion, the board had mentioned that by opening up pilot projects, that you also expected compliance to improve on the rest of the watershed. So it's not just compliance on pilot projects and adjacent. How is compliance on the watershed improving? And thank you, Director Russell, for bringing up nighttime use. And equestrian community is interested in serving as a volunteer patrol, such as we do for Marin County Parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Al Bowman, Vernon Hoffman, and then Mark Vendetti.
Thank you for all the work that's led here. Lots of us think there's been plenty of what you could call statistical surveying over the last 10 years when we've been riding. But it's needed that we do it again. I was a Parks and Public Space Commissioner for seven years in Marin County, and I had some experience with these surveys and pilots as we revised the codes and put those into the countywide plan. It's important that there be as much agreement as possible before you do this and set up the final for the survey between the user groups because it's easy to say later, well, we weren't represented. If that wasn't the trail that's important to us, the more input you can get, an agreement about which trails are on the list, the better. Also, statistical significance is very important. And if you're really going to count on these things, you have to have statistical significance. It's very difficult. It's time consuming and it's costly. But that's all anybody has to say about it, to deny your conclusions. And don't please rely on supposition or algorithms for how much use there is on there. I've already seen a little data on there that indicates how faulty that can be. I want to just say that the paradigms will change greatly over e-bike use and bike use while you're doing this survey. It's a couple of years. And I would urge you to keep tabs on what's happening all across the country and California, and particularly in adjacent neighbors of ours that are jurisdictions that we don't cooperate enough with. Prepare yourselves, as I think you're doing, for obstructive and distracting and otherwise legal action, which will follow this. The more proactive you are about getting the data you're going to need, the better off we'll be when we're finished.
Thank you. Mr. Vernon Huffman, please. Mark Vendetti.
Thank you. Vernon Huffman, Executive Director of Access for Bikes Foundation. We represent about 3,500 mountain bikers here in the county. Just want to say that along with MCBC and my colleague Tom Boss, we've been at this, having this conversation for over 20 years. So it's exciting to finally see the rubber hit the road and see some relief for mountain bikers. The changing demographic out there is significant. Your own surveys show it. E-bikes are out there and bikes are on trails because their needs have not been met. I look forward to working with the board and the staff to help try to meet those needs and try to provide some opportunities. And under your monitoring program, I was really excited to see that a number B invasive plants. I've been here at this podium, offering our services and saying that if we had some trail access, it would encourage my members to get engaged. And I can get out there and pull that broom. And let's establish a corridor that you want to see maintained and we'll do it. And then your next trail conditions. I have a crew. I can bring 20, 30, 40, 50 people out and we can address those conditions. I did come out for National Trails Day and I got a personal look at what shape the trails are in, and they're not good. But again, if we had some access, that would help me influence my team and my ability to get them out there to help. So we're here, we're ready, we're ready to go. And please continue to reach out because we're better working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Vendetti, please.
Hello, and I'm here in support of the Mountain Bike Pilot Project. I appreciate all the good work that the Water Board and team have put together for this. It's listening through the presentations this morning. It's been really impressive and heartening and I want to thank you very much. I'm coming from the point of view of a lifelong mountain biker. I started riding Mount Tam in about 1971 and I can remember the old days. And past president of Marin Museum of Bicycling, also for the last 10 years. I want to, I want to say that with all the work, the hard work, all the research that's been put into this, I would like to advocate for continued partnership and expanding partnership with all the mountain bike advocacy groups and all the people who are so interested and enthusiastic about being part of the solution to make this work and to stay on the positive aspects and optimistically looking forward to having this trail equity and being able to share the mountain again like we had it in the old days. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annabelle Heinemann, please. And then we're going to go to our Zoom attendees.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the late contribution to the comment card. I'm Annabelle. I am from Mill Valley. And first, I just want to say thank you to all of you for all the hard work you've put into it. I'm thrilled to see the progress we're making. I've got a long way to go, but everybody's put in a ton of hard work and it's really appreciated. I am mom to three girls. My three girls grew up since they could basically walk in all forms of bike carriers, bike trailers, trailer bikes, bikes, tandem bikes, everything. It's been a huge part of their life and a very healthy part of their life. And so I really want to point out here, I just really have three quick comments. One is just to encourage us to remember our obligation to the next generation. You've heard about all the, you know, huge number of youth we have out there that are enthusiastic bikers. We should be supporting them, but we should also be leveraging them. Like we also heard, these guys are a great resource for us to use. They also have obligations that they have to meet. You all know that. So really just invitation to remember that important part of our role here. And also, secondly, you know, this is a win-win for us. We know that too. That we are lagging behind other areas who have been, you know, have done this successfully and seen it as a win-win to the community. And so I invite us to remember that. Secondly, on the e-bike pilot, similar concept. Just want to remind you of the, you know, this is a great opportunity for a healthy outdoor opportunity for people that otherwise wouldn't be able to get out there due to a disability or any other reason. And lastly, I'm a big fan of data and I just think having these key metrics and data collection is really how we're going to get to the bottom of, you know, how successful this is. I encourage that. And I think that will be really telling. It'll be great to see the metrics for success. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Joel Schrock, Susan, and then Mickey Allison. Go ahead, Mr. Schrock.
Heather, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name's Joel Schrock. I'm advocacy lead for a group of 14,500 Bay Area mountain bikers called Bambi. Thank you for taking the steps to address this long-running issue of people wanting to access trails in our open space on their bicycles. I moved to the Bay Area in 1992 with hopes of beautiful rides on Mount Tam. And I was shocked to find out how little trail access was available to bikes. Access to trails for cyclists has also been a longstanding issue in East Bay regional parks as well. But they've taken steps to address this issue of the formation of the Breonius Mountain Bike Pilot Project, which launched in April of last year. In this pilot, they've studied new management strategies to reduce user conflict, prevent unauthorized trail construction while opening access to single-track prevent unauthorized trail construction while opening access to single-track trails for cyclists. Additionally, they granted Class 1 e-bikes the same access as traditional bikes in all of their parks around the same time. Some user-built trails were restored to natural habitat. Others were opened to be used as a single-user, one-way downhill trails for bikes. This separates users when speeds rise, providing a better experience for foot traffic as well as for the cyclists who don't have to worry about uphill traffic around the next corner. The pilot is entering its second year and has been a resounding success for all user groups. I urge you to contact your counterparts within the East Bay Regional Park for their input. Sean Dugan, the Trails Program Manager, would be a great person to reach out to, as well as their General Manager, Sabrina Landreth. The pilot has been a particular boon for the kids who run mountain bike teams, but have lacked access for them to ride and build up their fitness. As you're likely aware, there are a lot of kids on mountain bike, in Marin, on mountain bike teams, and they need access to trails that are close by because their schedules are very busy. Even if kids aren't on a cycling team, all kids need to have access to open space that's close by so that are fun and engaging to get them off their screens and out into nature. Please continue to support this effort to open up our open spaces to the cyclists in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, please.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. A board member was mentioning something about the community reaching out with com, with their comments. I'm sorry if I'm not restating that adequately enough. But I wanted to give my, my thoughts, my comments about this. I don't feel that the hiking community, nor the wildlife community, is adequately represented in these conversations, especially in light of this loud, powerful bicycle lobby here. Now, let me make it clear. I'm a cyclist and I'm a hiker, long time. This, this, the watershed lands, people have moved to Marin County for, for the trees, for the wildlife. This is not New York City. This is not San Francisco. And we have all sorts of animals, wildlife on the watershed lands. They should be, they've been here before any of us were, were here in this area. And it's nice to have these discussions about cycles. But I feel that there needs to be, that there, that they should be, that the wildlife takes priority over everything. And I'd like to also hear about bird nests, nesting and snakes that come out on the trail and the impact of bicycles on, and on, the impact of bicycles on these creatures and, and also the impact of bicycles on the hikers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Allison, please.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I moved to Marin in the fall of 2004, discovered a MMW trails on both sides of the mountain and bought my first pass on January 1st, 2004, five, and when I was 62 years old. Anyway, I stopped actually buying passes since COVID because literally I was on going uphill to Mount Tam and a biker using a rogue trail that was on the outside of the fire road flew off the top. And I'd almost killed me because, and I was lucky, I stepped back and was not hurt. He never stopped, but he had a horrified look on his face when he went by. I also witnessed that day, young men actually, I had a visitor coming, actually begging about how fast they could go down the hill. They would actually test and see how many minutes they could take to go down. And there were e-bikers with them, young men on e-bikes. You've got to understand, some people just don't think very well. Other times I've gone on, on the MMWD trails and I have had, been air and been thrown, shoved off the road, literally. One guy took me and threw me against a hill on a trail. I was, it's scary. I'm a normal user who likes to go by myself. I'm now 80, you know, 71, 81. So it's just, this is driving me crazy. It's, people don't stop. They use it. Alpine Trail that goes down to the Alpine Lake has been eroded horrifically because of bikes and all the bike trails coming into it. So please, please license these bikes, make them pay, make sure they have insurance. So that if they hurt somebody, they can pay. Thank you.
Next one, thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Jamie Mackey, Philip Mooney, and then Bill Engelhardt. Go ahead, Mr. Mackey.
Hi, I'm so happy to be part of the generation that's seeing Marin County catch up with the rest of the country in regards to recreation management. When my wife and I moved here in 2009, we were shocked at the level of hostility we saw between different user groups. We've lived in lots of different states and every other experience we had had was these groups working together for the greater good of the environment and our experiences in nature. I mean, there'll always be conflict between different user groups, but they have to share a single resource. But in my experience, appropriate management of that resource makes all the difference. Spent lots of time, accountable hours doing trail work with equestrian hikers that share the same trail. My biggest concern surrounding the success of the pilot program is education surrounding trail etiquette. Many of the users that will benefit from this program will be using trails together for the first time in their life. I, I don't think enforcement of these, you know, there was a lot of talk, I mean, there's been talk about enforcement. I think really the enforcement resources should be cut in half and that funding should be dedicated to trail user education. People are usually good by nature and if you bring people into the community, they learn how to behave in an acceptable way that's socially appropriate. Yeah, and I just feel like more rangers running around the watershed, looking for people, breaking the rules. But I mean, more resources are spent on that than some localities might spend on law enforcement in a dangerous part of the city. Last thing is there were comments around nighttime usage and I feel like opening the watershed at nighttime would be a great way to limit user conflict and disperse users over a greater timeframe. Thank you.
Philip Mooney, please.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Phil Mooney from San Rafael. I'm a mountain biker and an environmentalist. I'm a hiker and a scientist. I'm a trail runner and I'm a parent that loves visiting the watershed with my family. And I'm here today to express my support for the multi-use single-track pilot program you're considering. I'd like to commend the staff and board for the diligence and thoughtful consideration you have put into the entire watershed rec plan. Your efforts are truly appreciated by the community and I'm confident that we can make this initiative a resounding success. I'd like to be the fourth public comment to highlight Northside Trail as an ideal candidate for inclusion in this pilot. Northside offers excellent connectivity due to its remote location. It has a low likelihood of conflicts, making it a prime location to demonstrate the effectiveness of the program. Incorporating Northside should also provide insights that can inform future expansions of the program. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Engelhardt, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Engelhardt. I live in San Anselmo, a mountain biker. Would very much like to thank the Water District staff and board for taking up this issue. I applaud the engagement of Santa Cruz Mountain Trail stewardship. They've built great trails and maintained fantastic trails in Santa Cruz. I'm very much in support of providing equitable access to single-track for mountain bikers as soon as possible, including Northside. Let's not forget that this is indeed the birthplace of mountain biking and the idea that there isn't any legal single-track on Water District property seems crazy to me. All this talk of conflict, adherence to rules and enforcement make it sound like mountain bikers are a bunch of scofflaws, which is of course not true. What really is needed is an attitude of cooperation and sharing that doesn't seem to exist very well here in Marin. I look forward to a day when Marin is like lots of other places that I mountain bike in the Bay Area and elsewhere in the country where hikers and bikers and equestrians and other users all seem to get along just fine and are able to share single-track trails and, and do it without a tremendous amount of acrimony. When it comes to the actual pilot program, I really hope that opening the trails that are considered are left in as natural state as possible. I've seen what has happened in the past and it seems like what often happens is that trails, in order to be made legal, are tend to turn into effectively car paths. And I don't think that any of the mountain bikers who have spoken today or who are interested in these trails are interested in that. And I don't understand why the, the screening process seems to imply that mountain bikes have a greater impact on sensitive natural habitat than hikers and equestrians that already have access to trails. And I would also, like another speaker, would like to know what constitutes success. The one thing that seemed to be left out of the presentation that was given was what success will look like. Thank you for your time and I hope that we are able to have single-track open soon.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Larry Minikas, Krista, and Bill Keen.
Good morning. And Sean, thank you for the presentation. It's, it's very much appreciated. We know how much work has gone into this. And when we talk about needs, the real need is the need to protect biodiversity, that protect wildlife corridors. What we, equestrians, hikers and bikers want and desire are more availability, but it's not a need. So we have to separate these. The other thing that we really need to focus on are the social trails because these do disrupt wildlife corridors and we have to shut down as many of these as we can and get compliance. And it's not the bikers necessarily that, I just want to be careful here, that are, the ones building these social trails are going on it. A lot of hikers have been doing this for many, many decades and they've been very harmful. And to night use, this is exceptionally harmful to wildlife. And when we talk about equity, we have to have wildlife within that framework of equity to ensure that that is, that we are protecting this resource first and foremost. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Krista, please, then Bill Keen.
Hi, my name is Krista Hoff. I'm taking, I've taken over Tom Boss's position as Off-Road Director at Marin County Bicycle Coalition. I'm a Marin County native, former Marin County Parks and Open Space Park Ranger. And I have a background in environmental biology. I have a deep appreciation and care for the ecosystems we, you manage. I hiked, I've hiked and biked this landscape my whole life and been a steward of this land. I want to thank you for all the work and diligence that's been going into this pilot program. It shows a high level of care and commitment to a successful pilot. As a board member highlighted, the opportunity to gather data is huge. The pilot itself is the best way to see what impact of opening the trails to bikes, if any, will be. We have, we are committed, the cyclists are committed to the success of this project. It's hugely exciting to have this, even as something that we are approaching right now and hope that our community partners see that we can all share harmoniously and tread lightly on the land. Ultimately, connecting all users with this incredibly special environment we inhabit and recreate and builds more people who care about it, who will be there to take care of it, protect it for generations to come. Inviting cyclists into these trails with this pilot is the next, the right next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Keen, and then lastly, there'll be Tom Boss. Go ahead, Mr. Keen.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to thank staff and the board for bringing this forward at this time. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to test out some innovative ideas on how to share trails. I also want to recognize some, somewhere in this room, but hikers out there. I've had conversations with many of them and they really do get this idea of equity. This idea that it's, from a hiker's standpoint, to, to use the trails and be happy with the way things are because you have access to everything. And I really do appreciate those hikers who have said to me, oh, I get it. Now that we've had this conversation, you don't have access to any single-track trails. Oh, it does seem like a fair thing to do that. So I think when we have conversations together, it's a great way to build consensus and partnership. With regard to something Larry Minikas said, I completely agree. There are some social trails out there that need to be shut down. I would encourage you to do that as part of the RTMP update. And I would also ask that the board, I've said this, I'm a broken record, consider eliminating the practice of off-trail hiking. I think more than anything, that impacts habitat connectivity and corridors more than any other use on the mountain. And lastly, with regard to SEQA, I know there's been some, some things said about SEQA. Pilots are exempt from SEQA because they're just that, they're pilots. There are opportunities for you to, to look at, you know, things that you may want to do in a larger context. And that's why it's there. So you don't have to spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars doing SEQA for something that you may or may not do in the long run. And this is coming from a person who practiced SEQA for more than 15 years in my past. Thank you, and I really appreciate what you're doing, board.
Thank you. Lastly, Mr. Tom Boss, please.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Just would like to start by thanking staff, the board, and everybody who's been engaged in this process and helping us get to this point, which I feel is a really positive place to be. Bicycle advocates have been, have a good track record on pursuing thoughtful projects, in my opinion. DS Ridge Trail, Bill's Trail, 680 Trail, these initially had some concerns, but they've turned out to be very successful projects and the bicycle community joins with others to care for these trails. We come out on a regular basis to make sure they're maintained and, and successful implementations. I understand the focus on enforcement, but I, I think you might be surprised by how the bicycle community comes together, steps up and make sure these initial pilots are successful and also are something to build on. And last, I know MCBC, Access for Bikes, e-bike access, and even our friends in the conservation community. If they, we can come together, we will promote stewardship and, and provide education to make sure that we have a successful pilot project series come out. And let's work together to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers?
Great. Thank you very much. And for the public who came for this item, thank you very much for taking time out of a weekday morning to come and give your comments. We appreciate hearing from everybody and continue to look forward to more discussion as this moves forward. Sean, Don, Carl, thank you very much. Go ahead and move on to Item D, Forestry Services Contract.
Good afternoon, directors. We're going to have Carl Sanders, our Natural Resources Program Manager, present the next two items for us.
Good afternoon. Good morning, board. Carl Sanders, Natural Resources Program Manager. Excuse me. I've got two items for you today, both are review and refer, both are contracts to support. I'll let the noise settle down behind me. Okay, again, I have two items in front of you, both are review and refer, both are contracts to support our Biffip. I'll take the first one here, which are amendments to existing contracts, both of which are construction contracts. One is for Forester and Kroger, the second is for Bay Area Tree Services. Similar contracts in terms of how we implement the Biffip, which was our biodiversity fire and fuels integrated plan adopted in 2019. Both are in their second one-year extensions. So they each started with a two-year contract with an option to extend for two years in one-year increments. This will then be their final contract or their final year or their final extension. And then we'll go out to bid this time next year. Both contractors, both fats, I call them bats, but very Tree Services and Forester and Kroger, which I call F and K, have performed exceptionally over the last few years. I've been happy with their work, their production, their safety. And I, through amendment, would propose that we extend their contracts next year. Both of these contracts will be supported with a combination of capital operations and grants that we have in place. One grant, our Wildlife Conservation Board, and a second, a CAL FIRE grant, the exact amount of that grant to be determined, given the state's fluctuating budget at this moment. Each of these contracts Um, each of these contracts, um, is just over a million dollars for their, for their final year of implementation. That's the first item. I'll just keep it brief and sweet. And Sean, if you had any input on that, I can move on to the second.
Let's, um, I think we want to ask for this to be a review and refer item.
Review and referrals this morning. Jerry, can we take these both at the same time? Or is it better to just do individually? Assume individually, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So any board member comment on this? Terry, any public comment?
None.
Okay, I just need a motion. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Great. Thank you.
All right, keeping, keeping it short.
Go ahead and move on to item E.
Okay, this is a, um, a new, a new forestry contract that I would like to put out to bid. This is a contract that will replace, um, an existing, uh, forestry contract that is now held by Hanford Incorporated, INC. Uh, they've had this contract for the last four years. Uh, I will be modifying this contract and using a new template, one that we've used before, uh, most recently with our, uh, excuse me, our prescribed fire or prescribed burn, uh, contract with Biswell Forestry. Uh, this will be a three-year contract with an option to extend in one-year increments or two one-year increments as well. So ultimately, it could end up being a five-year contract. This allows for a lot more efficiency once we get somebody on board that, that's working well for us. Uh, this contract, uh, will be a little different from these other, uh, contracts that I just mentioned, in that it will have a pile burn support component to it as well as a fisheries, uh, fisheries restoration, uh, component to as well vegetation-related. Uh, it will not have the prescribed burn, uh, components, uh, or to the same level and or qualifications that I do in my existing, uh, in my existing wildland fire services contract. Uh, but it again, will, the primary role of this contract will be to support implementation of the Biffip going forward, hopefully over the next three to five years. Uh, my estimate for that first three years is that this contract, this new contract will be approximately four million dollars. So we'll see what the bids come in at. I'll be working with our finance department on, uh, putting those, uh, you know, inviting bids, reviewing those bids, and then, uh, my review and refer is that at a future, uh, board meeting, regular board meeting, we, uh, accept the lowest qualified bidder on this contract.
And if I may, really quickly, I believe we, uh, got out of order. I believe that we're actually.
I'm sorry?
Uh, I believe what we did is we just approved item E.
No, D was the first one, review and refer.
Yes, and I, I think that was the contract though, right? The extensions of the two contracts, correct?
Yes.
Correct, so, uh, just for clarity, the board reviewed and referred to item E, so we're technically on item D right now, which is the new general services agreement. So just a little bit out of order.
My apologies, I'm out of order.
Okay, do we need to take another motion? Are we okay with what we have?
No, I, I think that we're fine on that. And then we'll just go back and approve item D and accept any public comments on that.
Great.
This, I, I should also add that this contract, slightly different from the two, uh, existing contracts, uh, will have a, uh, a component for heavy equipment operating, uh, and in doing on-the-ground mastication of both new and, uh, existing, vegetative units that we'll be building out or maintaining.
Great. Thank you.
And it's all budgeted already?
Correct, yeah, same, similar, similar type of budget. Uh, we're looking at both capital, uh, combination of capital, uh, operations, and then those two grants, the Wildlife Conservation Board and CAL FIRE.
What kind of response do you expect?
I've got a lot of interested, existing contractors. I've got a lot of them knocking at my door, calling me on the phone, asking me when it's going to be released. Uh, I would expect we should get a, a strong response, unlike, unlike what we did for the, uh, wildland fire services where there are less qualified contractors.
Is it like a clearing grubbing contractor that who actually does the work?
Uh, uh, part of it's going to be a mechanical reduction of, uh, you know, forest fuels. Part of it will be, um, maintaining, uh, existing, uh, treatments that we put in place over the last five years, actually even over the last fifteen years. Um, you know, pulling broom, a big component is hand labor pulling broom, as well as the, uh, hand and machine work, uh, putting in, uh, new treatments.
We see a variety of, whether it be an arborist company, um, a landscape company, or some of these companies that specialize in restoration. Um, so from the clearing and grubbing perspective as well.
Cool. Well, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Matt, I just, I, I, I also, I was gonna, I wanted to bring this up. I got confused by the order, but I think this is under the contract amendments. I was really excited to see that we're bringing in a water buffalo.
Yes.
But I'm guessing it's probably not the water buffalo that I'm.
Not the four-legged one. No, no.
That's, that's, that's too bad, but what is it then?
For a port- a portable water source for, um, uh, fire prevention.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll be trying to bring goats in next year also.
Mr. Do Little, yes, okay.
Can I?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, uh, um, I like our innovation here. Um, along those lines, I'd, uh, I'd love to understand a little bit more about the fisheries component to this contract and, and maybe lead with where my next inquiry, which may be related, is, and, and Sean, I know I've talked to you, um, about this as well in the past about, you know, increasingly there are innovative techniques looking at at doing fuel load reduction and pairing that with, with erosion control and, which has a carbon degradation benefit, it has a water supply benefit, and, you know, and, and landscape restoration benefit. And, and I think economically too, when you're not looking at having to haul off material when it's of the right size in the right location, would this contract be flexible enough to support? I know we, we don't currently engage in that type of, it's called gully stuffing is a, is one elegant way of saying it. I do, would this contract enable us to do a pilot if we were to look at exploring that pathway? Yeah, so for the, um, restoration part of it, in terms of Lagunese Creek, what we did here is essentially built in a comp- a capacity within this contract, so enough hours to have the labor to help us go out and do the invasive plant management or the maintenance of the native plants that are planted as part of it. So in the winter habitat project that we did a few years ago, we had a requirement under all of our permits that we maintain those native plants that were installed for five years and manage the native, the invasive plants that might come into that site. And we'll have the same conditions within this current project we're implementing. So this contract gives us the capacity to do that maintenance after the initial construction, if that makes sense. Um, so this gives us the capacity to do the work on state parks property to ensure that the project is successful over the coming years and in compliance with our permits and grants. And then in terms of the gully stuffing, yeah, this contract is one that we've used to do decommission trails. So that's where we've used it before, where we're doing vegetation management, generating debris that we can use to kind of, um, stuff the trail so that we reduce the use of that non-system trail. And so this does provide us the labor that we need to do those other types of veg management activities. Um, so yeah, there's opportunities with this. Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for both of those. And then we'll take a, a motion and a second on item D.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, thank you, Larry. Terry, is there any public comment on this item?
There are none.
Hey, once again, so moved.
And second.
Great, thank you very much, Carl. Sean, thank you very much. Um, next up, Terry, um, number five, upcoming meetings.
Yes, the next watershed committee meeting is scheduled for September nineteenth at nine thirty in the morning.
Great, and thank you very, everybody, everybody who's tuned in online and that go ahead and join the meeting.